I'll take a breath now.
Right, we can hear you and see your screen.
Wonderful, thank you so much, thank you for your patience. As I mentioned, I'll be talking about Social Profile 2020, which has been prepared by Blacktown City Council. And there are sort of three sides to our perspective of the social profile in Blacktown City. Firstly, I'll be talking about the actual, the snapshot side. So it's like taking a particular snapshot of our city in a point in time. And it brings together a whole range of aspects. It brings together what's important to us is the community's voice and different dimensions of the community's voice and their concerns at that time. A summary of quantitative measures, different data sets of social indicators for our city. And it's also an important tool to inform councils' decision-making. In fact, how everyone plans for the future of our city. So it's our evidence base. The key word is it's a social profile. So all the things that we're not looking at largely our economic profile or our employment profile. We're bringing together all the things that support the overall wellbeing and quality of life of our residents and helps them to reach their full potential. So a bit about our snapshot of the community. So I'll talk a little bit about that now. It's a comprehensive snapshot of the population of our city at this point in time. It draws together input from our conversations with community. About two and a half thousand responses to our Quality of Life Survey, which was specifically designed for Social Profile 2020. Along with input from 600 residents into our Blacktown City Community Satisfaction Survey. We had, in addition to support the survey material, targeted focus groups with residents who had special needs or for whom the survey wasn't the best way to give their feedback. So they were people with special needs, people with disability in different settings. We focused on particular four with women, young people. We reached out to children at a children's conference. And we also had targeted interviews with 30 key service agencies in our city. So that's the qualitative component. And then alongside that, we have 115 data sets that are sourced from everything from our Australian Bureau of Census, our Australian Social Health Atlas, and different data sets produced by agencies such as health, transport, planning, crime statistics. And any bit of research that focuses on our city, and that's the key word. We start with looking at anything that focuses on Blacktown City as our starting point. We scavenge wherever we can. So the profile, as I said, is a snapshot in time. So it's not just useful to have a bunch of data, no matter how good it is and how comprehensive. It's really important, if I go back to the snapshot analogy, that we look at the frame, we look at the colour, we look at what we want to highlight in that snapshot. It also has to have some teeth. And the teeth in this particular version of our social profile is that it aligns with the UN Sustainable Development Goals and critically to council's community strategic plan. So for the first time before the 2020 profile, we framed our snapshot in line with the 17 Sustainable Development Goals. And this gave us the opportunity to include topics we hadn't been able to address in previous profiles. So we could add a focus on poverty and inequality, climate change and the environment. Give more profile to health, to infrastructure, and just generally to what it's like living in an urban and a city environment. And it was great to have these additional themes in the framework because it actually gave more of a voice to the stories that we got, well, we received from our residents. They talked a lot about amenity and their physical surroundings and the impact of growing urban development. By using councils' strategic goals as an additional framework, immediately we started to align with councils' language and priorities. And it made it much more relevant for the work of councils. So the frame was very important in this particular, the Social Profile 2020. So what does it look at? Just the map on the left is really the sort of the four divisions of our city. So we've got quite a large city, roughly 390,000, 395,000 population, 48 suburbs and counties with a footprint of about 247 square kilometres. So it's quite large. So we break it up into smaller precincts and we also find that each precinct has its own character. So that's why the geography is really important for us. And there are different, so in each of the elements, we look at different community priorities, our demographic diversity. Now we look at also natural and built environments, issues such as cohesion, inclusiveness, safety and connectedness, education and employment, advantage and disadvantage. We've got more of a frame now for our social infrastructure and our current service provision and gaps and future needs. We include information on health and wellbeing, including life expectancy, risk factors, mental health and addiction. And also we incorporate general satisfaction of what it's like living in our city. You probably can't see this, but what this shows, if I go through it, is really how we map the themes to council strategic goals or strategic themes in the community strategic plan. And that's a challenge. You know, we've got a lot of information, so a lot of thought has gone into where it fits, where it's relevant and how we can also influence councils' social and wellbeing indicators and their regular integrated planning and reporting requirements. So a lot of work is required in terms of matching the data to the framework. So it just gives you an idea of where things fit. So it's hard, I mean, it's not always intuitive. We mapped health into sporting and active city because I guess even though local government hasn't seen health as a major focus, certainly does a lot of work which supports the health and wellbeing of our residents. It kept the profile, very importantly for us, captures our community's voice. So it captures what residents like about living in our city, what they dislike. And also we ask them what they would like to change. So there's the aspirational side of what they want to see in the future in their city. So their main headline chapters, but then we go into each of the specific, sorry, headline frames. And then we go into specific chapters. So our chapters look a little like that. I know it's busy, but as you can see, we map it according to strategic directions. But also you can see with the green and the yellow, how it applies to Sustainable Development Goals. We pull out key messages from our community research and we link that to the central issue. We define the central issue and then link it to the research and what the community has said. And importantly, in this profile, we've taken it that step further to say, so what? So what are the opportunities for action for social research and further research and for policy development? So what can council and other organisations in our city do about this issue? The pages, we really want this profile to look like it belongs to our city. So we look at local analysis of statistics and trends, how we're going in comparison to our previous profile. We look at key highlights. We bring in words and quotes from our residents. We look at examples of work on the ground in our community, what's council already doing or what are other agencies doing? We bring in images from our community. And importantly, each page has got some key dashboard indicators for us to work towards and improve. So when it comes to the qualitative and the quantitative elements of the research, you might want to know a little bit about how we did the qualitative research. Well, it's a big part of it is our community engagement. And we couldn't have achieved the great uptake from residents without lots of work in partnership with other organisations, teams within council, of course, and the community themselves. Initially, we had support from council who see this as a valuable exercise to engage in every four or so years. We certainly have had the track record of social profiles that go back to about 2007. So each time we've undertaken this kind of exercise, we have reviewed our previous processes. We've looked at where we have been in the past and then we've been able to compare where the city is in relation to the previous profile. And we've also been able to refine our methodology over the time. As a city grows, the tasks become more challenging with the size of our city. We specifically spoke to some users of 2016 profile and got their feedback about how we could improve the methodology. So we did try to incorporate some of those changes. Now, that led us to modify some questions, which I can talk a little bit more about. But right now, I just wanted to talk about some of the aspects of how we did the engagement. A big challenge for us is that people ask us about the rigor of what we do. And because a lot of our work focuses particularly on qualitative information, we are much more interested in representativeness of the participants in our community engagement rather than sort of strict rigor. And how we do that is to have a look at who we are outreach and who's participating in our survey processes. And then matching it to our most recent census data, which was 2016. So that as the surveys came in, we looked at the background data on each of the participants to see whether we were getting good coverage of the city's population. The strategies we used, as I mentioned, were the online survey, which was based on our city website. And it could accumulate the data as we went through and gather data on who completed the surveys. We promoted the survey through our city venues, libraries, our community centres, our sports facilities. And we also partnered with other teams at key city events and festivals. So we did some cold surveying in those settings. We did quite a large mail out in partnership with our children's services section. But then we had to really reach out to other service providers in the community sector. Our migrant resource centres, our other government agencies and key advisory committees and interagencies. We have about a 40-plus percent population of our city speaking a language other than English. So we translated our tool into 12 languages, which are the main 12 languages of our city. And as I mentioned, partnered with our migrant resource centres to ensure that those surveys were sent out. And we then had the responses back translated into English. So that way, at least we got some coverage for people whose first language wasn't English. But I'm pleased to say that even with the online tool, we had quite a large uptake of people whose first language wasn't English, but who were able to complete the survey with using the English tool. For any of the groups, as I mentioned, who couldn't participate or weren't comfortable participating with an online survey, we ran targeted focus groups. And these included some of our language-specific groups, some of our older groups, people living with disability. We ran some progress for people with a visual impairment and our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities as well. Key to the success of this is our partnerships with community agencies. They see the value of having this profile, not just as a product for council, but it's something that supports their planning and their submission writing. So they've got a stake in the product as well. Through the process of the survey, while it was up on our website, we monitored, as I said, the uptake just to make sure that it was matching the population. In 2016, we certainly had issues with uptake from young people and also from men. For some strange reasons, men don't like doing surveys. So we had a waiting to more women filling in the survey. So we did a lot of work this time. We still didn't get the results with men. So if you've got suggestions, I would love to hear them. But we certainly did a whole lot better in partnering with youth services provider in terms of improving the input of young people's voices. And were able to do some specific surveying with permission of parents at a children's conference. So I can talk more about that if you like. So you can see there's quite a comprehensive exercise in trying to make sure that, excuse me, we have as representative a database to start off with. So what's in the survey? It's a combination of open and closed questions. So as you can see before you, we asked just simply three things you like most, three things you dislike and one thing you'd like to change. So that generates quite a lot of qualitative data that needs to be coded and analysed. The next set of questions really are, they're close questions and we repeat this during each survey. So it's, I feel like I belong. It's about being able to rely on people if you have a problem, perceptions of safety, how often people speak with their neighbours and overall satisfaction. So they're just straight, close questions that people can tick the box and we compare them each time we do the survey. We included some new questions based on the feedback with the people who use Social Profile 2016. This was a really interesting question to ask. It was one, what's one thing you do regularly to improve your quality of life or wellbeing? And that gave us some information about what people do in their free time, some surprising information. Blacktown's always been seen as a city that's sedentary and overwhelmingly people say they walk and they love to walk alone or with dogs in the park in their streets. So it was really interesting to have this information. But we also got a lot of other rich information about the things that they like to do. But more importantly, we got some really valuable information for council about the barriers that stop people. Sorry. Have we had a power outage or something? I've just had a bit of a power surge, sorry. I've got a storm happening here. Is everything okay?
Yep, everything's fine, Clarissa. You've had about 15 minutes so far.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll keep going. So the other question we asked was about services that people used regularly. And that was also helpful to us in terms of monitoring some of council services. And of course, the demographic information to help us map the location and also who, you know, some of the demographic characteristics of who's completing the survey. In our quantitative data, there's a huge list here, but basically it gives you a scope of the 115 data sets, some of the scope of what we have included into our indicated data book. And some of that is demographic, some of that is from the social atlas. So it gives you a range. And this is something we've either repeated what we used previously, but also if new data sets come aboard, we bank them and use them. And that's what we've done. We found in between 2016 and 2020, to make the task less onerous, as new data sets came to our attention, we banked them into a social planning database. So we could then draw this information down as we needed it when it came time to prepare the quantitative data book. In our satisfaction survey, this is undertaken by council to get feedback on how we perform. But there's a lot of rich information also that people share. What's interesting about this is that it's sort of, the surveys occur more frequently than our Quality of Life survey. But there's a lot of consistency in the data, so they support what we gather each four years. Okay. So it's not just enough to have the information, as I mentioned. So this is really the critical point, the evidence base. This is, as we say, this is where the rubber hits the road. So what do we do with this information? What do we do with the document? We have the language, we have the framework. The next bit is about how do we get this out to the key stakeholders so it makes a difference? So we're currently in promotion phase. So it's not just enough to have the profile endorsed. We now have to work in partnership within council to make sure that people are aware of the resource, that it meets their needs, that we nuance some of the information to align with some of the planning cycles. Our key concern at this stage is providing information to our new councillors. Once we have a council election, they have been delayed somewhat due to COVID. But we make sure that the councillors have a summary so that when the new council has induction, that it's ready for them. And also that it's aligned with our strategic plan, particularly the indicators that sit under the plan so that council is regularly measuring and reporting our progress against these wellbeing indicators. We need to close the loop with our community partners. Otherwise, when we go back to speak to them for the next profile, they're not going to be interested. So we need to tailor some of the information and present back to our community partners so that they can also have access to this information. Sure, it's sitting on our website, but it's really important that we promote it and market it and also tailor it to meet the needs. It's like a large cloth. We have the two data sets, our indicator data book and our qualitative data book. And then we can search them to meet the needs going forward with our planning requirements. This gives you an idea of what way we're going next. So to the left, we have the community engagement data book, we have the social indicator data book. And we have ongoing data that gets fed to us because as council, we subscribe to the ID demographic software, which is fed by census and other economic data. So that's sort of like our data, the resource that we use and we will use going forward. That sits behind Social Profile 2020. The ID data will be being updated regularly now they're feeding us information about COVID and what that might mean for us going forward. To the right-hand side, what we will do now with this information is, as I said, we're going to cut the cloth a little differently. We will cut it according to our target groups and drill down a little bit more and produce some mini profiles for target groups, our geography, both our city precincts and suburbs. And also what we haven't had a chance to do in the past, but we think is really important is to have a look at emerging issues and what this might mean also for future policies for council. So whether they be social, economic or environmental, we'd like to do some issues papers that emerge from Social Profile. This gives you an idea very roughly about what we're planning. So there's the listing towards the left of the demographic profiles, then the geographic profiles, some of which we've done. The red are our priorities. The north west is a growing, rapidly growing area and will probably be impacted by COVID. So the red areas are our hot priority areas. And our issues are the issues we've identified. But also we identify areas where we will work in partnership with other parts of council or in the community to develop the issues paper. The yellow just means these are some things we've already started working on. So just to wrap up, I just wanted to say before I go to questions, the city profile for us in Blacktown City continues to be a really important resource and important tool. Our city is the largest and one of the fastest growing in New South Wales. So to not have ready access to data about how our city is growing and changing, without this information, we wouldn't be able to plan and go forward. Council has shown an ongoing commitment to taking this regular snapshot. That's really important for us. When it was last endorsed, it was officially titled the Encyclopedia of Blacktown. And that was what the councillors have felt about it. So even our councillor said it's a valuable tool. We have a role, particularly in our team, to make sure we have access to and advocate for information about our city so that we have a really strong evidence base going forward. And it certainly has been for us an important guide for our future planning. But it also shows us what's working and what's not working for our residents. So it's a really important vehicle for giving our city, our residents a voice. So are we happy for me to move on to then some of the questions? Cool. So the first question we received was in relation to the implications for COVID. Yes, you're right. We had just gone to have Social Profile 2020 launched and it was approved about a month or two after COVID hit here and council was in sort of semi-lockdown. So we've been thinking a lot about how to incorporate some of the changes. As I mentioned, we are getting data feeds from our ID demographic provider about what this might mean for Blacktown City. And as a city with major growth centres, we're really concerned about what that might mean, particularly with our forecast figures. So yes, it will not include that, but we really need to think hard about using the information that we got in, say, 2018, 2019 as our solid base for saying, well, these were the issues that were a priority at that point in time. Second question. The report informs City 2036 strategic plan. Will regular yearly less robust quality of life reports and surveys be planned to monitor changes? And will data be, or will data be analysed from existing data sets and satisfaction survey from now on? So yes, the satisfaction survey goes on regardless. It is a key regular activity of councils and it's not something that's coordinated with the social planning team, which takes the leadership for the social profile. As I said, there is a lot of consistency between the themes that emerge there and the themes that come through in the profile. We certainly have considered how we might do in between surveys. It certainly is on the agenda for us now because the city is changing and definitely the issue of COVID will impact on us. But as you can see, it's also critical that we do a promotion period now and ensure that the information that we have got, which is our most current to date, is incorporated in some of our planning activities going forward. So it's not just sufficient to have the information base, but it's important to encourage people to know that it's there and can use it. Having it as an online tool, which means that if there are elements that need to be updated, we can update them online. The other critical milestone for us will be the census, the Australian Census, which is due to be conducted in 2021. And we will do an adjustment of data and include the data releases in our document once that becomes available, probably in 2022.
Clarissa, just before you go on to the third question on the screen, I had a question in the chat which relates probably to those other two from Wayne in Auckland. He mentioned the profile you had done in 2012. Have you done a comparison of those results and what's changed, got better or worse for your residents?
Sure. We've done, we had one in 2016, that was our most recent one. So we've done the 2012, 2016. And in our social capital questions particularly, we always do comparisons. So you will see in the document, I hope that you've all had a chance to look at the document, excuse me. But we do comparisons of, we've done comparisons to our social capital, all the closed questions I mentioned, to look at trends. And it is interesting, even though the changes are subtle, we are starting to see differences in connectedness and satisfaction. It's not major, but we certainly could probably do some more surveying to get clarity there. And it's interesting that in our new release areas, which are typically suburbs where lots of young couples have moved into areas where there was this limited infrastructure at the moment, but lots and lots of housing. Where in 2012 was probably paddocks with farms and cows. In those areas, there certainly is quite a different pattern of satisfaction than in the more established areas. So in our close questions, definitely that we're seeing some subtle Um so in our, so in our close questions, definitely that we're seeing some subtle changes. And in terms of our likes and our dislikes, there have certainly been some changes there with. Uh particularly in twenty sixteen, we'll a lot more commentary on dissatisfaction with increasing urbanisation. Density overcrowding. People have spoken a lot about the loss of green space, the loss of environment. And um wanting to keep that aspect of the city's profile previous as as it was previously. Is that okay?
Yep, thanks.
Have I covered all of that? Yeah?
Yep, yep, there's another question, but I'll let you do the three on the screen and then we can open up and people can ask.
So did the focus groups survey and or interview their residents? Uh um did they include less literate residents? Yes. So um we um what we did was we used focus groups. Um and we looked, we we looked at uh representation of particular target groups. That we were concerned about. And we also looked at parts of the city that we didn't think were getting a voice in the online surveys. And so we then um looked at ways that we could partner with community based organisations that might have some groups. Ready groups in those areas or organisations that work with particular target groups. I mentioned, um one of the groups was our males on wheel service providers who have um. Um regular groups of people who uh have got visual impairment and who have got some physical uh uh physical disabilities. So we ran focus groups with them. We use the similar question format to the online survey, but we adapted it. Um in the focus group format to gather information. So we kind of worked with um the residents so that they could have their voice. And then we fed fed back to them so that we made sure that we clarified um that we captured their their information. Um with groups from non-English speaking backgrounds, we worked with bilingual facilitators who helped us run the focus groups. And then we found also sometimes when we went through a focus group format with our um multicultural groups. Once they understood what was involved in the online survey, we gave out the translated versions. So some of them chose to actually do a translated version, which we then had back translated. Certainly, we could, we could do a lot better, but we felt that um, you know, we we sort of looked at particular. Target groups and locations and tried to make sure that each of our focus groups was a representative of both. Uh a locality or a target group, so we covered those. Um yeah, but I'm happy to talk more about that. That was quite, quite a a detailed process that we went through. I was really fortunate um to have some social work students from uh Western Sydney University. Um for the twelve month period who helped us with the data entry and who helped us with some of the focus group. Um conducting and 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 recording and collating those findings. Um if a city or region has not much data yet but wants to create a social profile, what advice on how to start collecting this data can be given? Um certainly, um we, look, we've got a template and it's not a perfect one, but certainly works for us. Um the thing we find very much um is that a lot of the data we're seeking is not, is not brought down to our Blacktown City level. And so we do a lot of advocacy to try and make sure we have better access to the data that we want. So we started off with a principle of really scavenging anything we can find that describes our city. And we we want to make sure too that when it describes the the boundaries, um it's it's aligned with our city, city boundaries. Um sometimes data sets are collected which include parts of our city, but um they might include other parts, so it makes it difficult. So I think the the starting point is to really be aware of any data sets that are out there that collect for your city. Or the geographic area you're interested in. Um and we collect that. It doesn't always align with when we're doing it for social profile. But once we 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 know that it's there and it's the most current data source, then we bank it. I'm certainly happy to give you a template of what we've put into our data bank. But um it it's sometimes it's consistently repeated stuff, um you know, as I said, census data. Uh in Australia, we have the Australian Social Atlas, which links to census data, but does more work around. Um um social health issues. Um so we we reference that because it also gathers at our local government comparative area. And sometimes even drills down to some of our precinct areas. So that's really important to us. Um uh I think that's the starting point. And also have have a think about what it is you're trying to capture. So you look the other way, saying, well, what do we need to build our profile that's relevant? And then start sourcing um and lots of lots of desktop analysis to see. But the other thing we've done is advocacy, making sure that we get the a- the information that we need and want to describe our city. Lastly, who was leading and coordinating the social profile project? Um this has been um with the community section of council and recently our social planning team. So um we start with um with reviewing the methodology, evaluating um how we went in the previous social profile. We advocate um through through our director and to our executive and to council to ensure that they will. Continue to support the social profile. So we go through that that cycle of having endorsement for it. And then we start the ball rolling uh in terms of of the work. As I said, we couldn't do this without support of community partners. And I think what we've learnt from twenty twenty is the importance of having partners within council. Um that would, that could help us. I think that at the moment with our team doing it, um it takes a lot longer than it needs to. And I think that if we engage with other sections of council, that that may have events or networks or links. And who can see now the benefit of partnering with us. I think um it could speed up the 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 time that it takes to do the community engagement. And then you've got more buy in across council already in the in the development of the profile. Um yeah, having an external organisation, um I guess that is a possibility. But um there are other organisation with uh other organisations that are looking at some of this information. Uh I think um um Ipsos is one of them. But at this stage, I think that, and and I guess I've got a bias here. I think that that going out and having the conversations with our residents and being present and listening is a really important part of this process. Um it's not just the data gathering, it's it's the working and connecting with community partners and the community. And there's a lot of um goodwill that comes out of this engagement with the community that see council. As very interested in in their views and opinions. And then when we feed back to communities, say, this is what we've gathered, um that they, I think, see the validity of them sharing their viewpoints with us.
Um thank you, Clarissa. I hope you've got a glass of water there. You've done a lot of talking. Um we'll open up the floor now to any other questions that may have come. Um I'll ask Wayne, you've typed one in the chat. There's a few people who don't have their cameras on, so. Oh, hello, Carol. Nice to see you. So either wave your hand or write something in the chat and I'll come to you. So Wayne, go ahead. Perhaps you could just say your name briefly and state where you're from, so Clarissa knows.
Sure, just while others are thinking, I'll um I will grab the floor. Um Kira, uh or hi, um Clarissa, my name's Wayne Leverco, I work with the Tamaki Makato or Auckland. Uh Safety Collective. Um so you can see our focus is on injury prevention, safety here in in Auckland. Hey, I just really wanted to say, um what an awesome um piece of work this is. Uh I set aside like thirty minutes to just have a look at it this morning and an hour and a half later. I I realised I was, I just had to dip in and out of it. It was just a brilliant piece of work. I don't think I've ever seen anything so comprehensive um at a local government level. I just love the way you've integrated the the survey. Um the the quotes, the connections to the um strategic plan for your for your council, the. Links to the UN um strategic development goals, it it really is there. It's more than a encyclopedia. Um because it's kind of got some prescriptions for change or what does this mean? What are the questions that arise in each of those um in each of those areas of work? So it really is a um super piece of work. Hey, so uh my question's, cool, um my question specifically is around um. Who or what are you looking to influence with this piece of work and and how? So you touched on um having a copy in front of the councillors as part of their induct- induction pack and whatever. I guess I'm thinking kind of what what plans or or thinking are you truly wanting to influence here? And is it just at the level of um Blacktown? Or are you thinking um state and federal government influence that you're wanting to bring to bear? And if so, how? So so the question is, you know, uh who and what are you trying to influence and and how with this awesome piece of work?
Sure. Um I um the big step for this particular profile, as I, as I mentioned. Um previously, we used a different framework. And I I guess previously also, the twenty sixteen was the profile that. Um moved away from councils having to develop a social plan in in New South Wales. Um to a a profile with social indicators embedded in our community strategic plan. So that's like a bit of a step that's happened in New South Wales. Um and so um so I guess for us, um we we had developed this profile in twenty sixteen. Using key themes, but then it's how did council, who had supported and funded and resourced this profile? How how did we make it easy for them to um engage with that profile? So one of the big drivers for this profile was how to make it something that would be picked up by teams in council. And aligned with council's strategic priorities. And did a lot of the thinking for council at a council, I guess, strategic level. Using the language of council. Um using the uh the UN uh goals was also important. Um I know that councils are moving towards looking at them as a framework for their word work broadly across the state. But I think when you look at what's captured in the UN goals, um it it's much more holistic in how it describes. Um what's happening for people in our city. So it brings in some of the environmental issues, it brings in some of the urban issues. And and so that's an important platform, not just for for our city, for our, for for uh our city planning. But we see that as a resource for other government agencies. A lot of them don't research it at the level of 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 our local government area. They, but they will dip into the information that we find. So we do hope that it's a resource for partners, particularly in health. Um and uh other agencies that are advocating for Blacktown City. Um the other thing is, I mentioned, is our community sector um doesn't have the resources to do these comprehensive. Um surveys. So they partner with us, but they know that they can rely on using the information for some of their work. I mentioned um our migrant resource centres, our Aboriginal service providers, our children's services. So um a lot of those groups rely on this information to be able to be there for them. So it it it's sort of having a framework that speaks to us strategically, but also to more providers. Um and so that they can use the information. How we're going to do it, um as I mentioned, there's a lot of work that has to be done in-house in council. So not just the document itself, but it's also the data that sits behind it. So I've really been approached by teams within council. Uh for example, our our cultural um and arts uh team, what are ready to do their next strategic plan. They they are will do their own engagement, but they're going to be using some of the findings of this work. Um our water team was have just put together their strategy document. But it aligns with the the words of what community has told us align a lot with um what is in their strategy documents. So so some of that is tailoring, you know, cutting the cloth and providing the evidence to those teams in council. And working with them so that um that the voice of the community issued gets gets uh expressed in those strategy documents. Um and there's some active marketing, it's not just enough to put it on our website. I think it's really important um to be out there in the community, providing feedback. To the interagencies and service providers about what our findings were. Um council also, up until recently, um it has advisory committees who are very supportive of the profile activities. Or the engagement activities, we will report back to them because uh even our our city um community engagement. Um advisory committees have used our profiles in the in the past uh to inform what their priorities are. So it's having the data, making sure the data's current, that we can sort of draw and cut, cut that cloth. But that's where the mini profiles are really important because they speak to different parts, different localities in our city. And different um workers that work with different uh target groups. And then, of course, picking up issues um that are going to be important for council. Uh and that may influence policy and policy change for council. So there's a lot of elements to how we're going to to be working with this going forward.
Um thank you, Clarissa. I could see Carol nodding her head a lot, so clearly you were saying the right things there. Did uh, oh, we can't, we can't hear you. I can just hear your mouth going, Carol. Did anyone else have a comment or question that they would like to ask? Either write it in the chat or raise your hand, or um there's enough of you, just unmute yourself and ask. Um if not, I think Clarissa might have a comment.
Something, something I did miss, and Carol will probably be saying, why didn't you mention this, Clarissa? Um is it really the importance of uh this influencing our community strategic plan going forward? And then from that, it looks at what council um will be measuring in terms of the key strategic areas. That is responsible for, um so that the findings we have influence um our strategic plan. And our 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 uh what we call our indicators, our critical bottom line indicators, which we measure, whereby we measure council's performance. And how we report on our progress. So that's a really important part. And that's why I mentioned, if it's in the language of council strategic plan, it makes it a lot easier for um, you know, decision makers and planners. At our strategic level to to embrace this document and incorporate it in their, in their work going forward.
Um. Thank you, Clarissa. Um and also I wanted to thank you to um Mary Anne, who is a new newly employed in um Waiteki. For sending us through those questions that you had on your slide. I think they um were a lot of questions a lot of people might have wanted.
Great questions.
Almost, almost an hour now. So does anyone else have anything? We've had a couple of messages. People are popping off to other things. Did anyone have any further comments, questions, discussion that they wanted? If you do, just unmute yourself and speak. I'm thinking maybe Alison does, no?
I I don't know whether you can hear me now. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I I've seen in 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 the last twenty years of working in social planning, and now I'm in corporate planning. I've seen social profiles that are just one pages to uh, you know, a significant body of work. This this particular social profile twenty twenty. And I encourage every council to do it. I think most councils do it in a very minimalist way. Um but I think it's a great way to influence change, influence strategic thinking in the organisation. And encourage and have an evidence base right across your city for others to use. Really, really encourage people to consider it and and, you know, that's all I really wanted to say. I think you've you've done a great job, Clarissa.
Yeah, yeah.
The biggest difference this time was that it's been presented in the same way. As our community strategic plan is set out. And that, I believe, we won't know until next year, I believe it's going to have a much bigger impact. Um and ability to influence the different silos in the organisation, provide them with an evidence base of. Of um some more strategic thinking from a community background for what they do.
Um thank you, Carol. I can see Alison, who is a councillor at Tararua, has got a question.
Hi, Tanya. Thank you. And look, thank you so much for the invitation to join today. I've actually found this absolutely fascinating. Um and it is something that our council is so far behind the eight ball on. Um the four wellbeings are now back in the in the pool, of course. But looking at how you chose your targeted focus groups, we've just done a basic, a community satisfaction survey recently. And we ended up using social pinpoint, which is all well and good, but there are a lot of people that don't have connectivity because we are a really. Which is all well and good, but there are a lot of people that don't have connectivity because we're a really large sprawling rural area. And so looking at how you broke those down into those different focus groups, I think is absolutely valuable. Um, I've written a screed of notes, even though everything's in there. And I've, I too have had a look at the social profile. And it's an amazing document. Um, and I look at what we do and I feel like we're this poor relations right now. So um, we are having quite a shift within our council towards more um about social well beings and community. And this is something that I've been striving for in the four years that I've been on council. Um, as you will know, Tanya, I've really been pushing to get us into the accreditation process for safer communities. And I'm carrying on with that with the support of the mayor. We've had some roadblocks, I'll be honest. But there've been some changes that we think now might just bring us across the line. So I'm excited.
Thank you. Thank you, Alison, and thank you for your comments there. Um, we had a few people flick off, rushing off to other meetings, I'm sure. But um, thank you, Clarissa. I, that was really, really interesting. If anyone still has any further questions or. Anything, if you could, you can email them through either to Tracy or I or Clarissa herself. Um, and we can go from there. There'll be a short. Quick evaluation that will land in your inbox afterwards. But um, thank you, Clarissa. That was really useful. And I know a lot of um. Communities might be jealous of that social profile you have because certainly the information and the ability to influence and um. The wellbeing lens that you take for your residents, it bodes well for Blacktown. And I'm sure it's not just. Pure by chance that Blacktown hasn't been hit as hard with some of the Covid stuff or some of the other communities with the good work that's been put in in the years. Relating to other places in Sydney. So um, thank you very much, Clarissa.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for that feedback, Tanya. And thank you for the great questions. Um. Uh, it was just great to sort of. Hear your questions because that's a lot of our thinking about how to go forward with this. So I wish you all the best. I think starting with the community's voice is really important and um. Then working from there, but happy to help if you've got any particular questions, if you can forward them to Tanya or Michael. And I've really enjoyed this afternoon. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Bye.